And if we could have a moment of silence, please. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Suburban Trends, The Record, The Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, Cablevision of Warwick, and West Milford TV 77, and posted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
This is Rowan here.
This is Stevenson here.
Mr. Conlon here.
This is Swire here.
Mr. Greenow.
This is O'Brien here.
Mr. Opchinsky here.
Mr. Stillman.
This is Van Dyke.
Here. Dr. Anamon?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our May regular meeting. First item on the superintendent's report. This is sort of our catch-up now as we've come out of the global pandemic. There are some catch-up items we have to get around to taking care of. One of those is one of our juniors at West Milford High School, James Gammon. He is here this evening. Last year, on March 4th, 2020, which is probably right before the pandemic hit, he earned his Eagle Scout rank. However, we have not had an opportunity to honor him this evening. For his Eagle project, James created a safe space for campfires at the New Jersey Camp for Blind Children at Camp Marcella in Rockaway. The camp needed movable benches because of the many campers that use wheelchairs. Prior to his project, the end of a camp session would host a campfire in an open, large, and flat grassy area near a lake. Campers would enter the area by walking or moving their wheelchairs from their cabins and nearby parking lot. This created a potential hazard for the campers. Also, heavy bleachers were carried from a nearby field for additional seating in the area. James installed a fire pit in the open area and replaced the need for bleachers with movable benches that are easier to transport. His project will be enjoyed by many generations of campers to come. Mr. Gammon, come up here. We do have a certificate on behalf of the Board of Ed and a very thankful community.
Thank you, Green.
You want us to turn it over now?
Sure.
James, you do not have to stay for the rest of the board meeting if you so choose. You're free to go. Thank you again. Next up, our end-of-the-year update. As you know, we do report COVID cases as they occur in our district, either from a student or a staff member. We usually just report them as an individual. We typically don't differentiate publicly. We know privately who the person who tested positive is. But on your desks and in the back of the media center for our guests, we do chart COVID-positive cases by month. And obviously, the May data is not complete yet because we still have a week left to go. But as you can see, COVID cases are decreasing in the district. From a high of the winter, they've gone dramatically lower. Most of that is due to, we believe, vaccinations, although there are other theories about seasonality and other items. So we will continue to update that moving forward. Also on your desk and in the back of the media center is the most recent travel and masking clarifications for K-12 schools. This is the handout. This is the most recent handout from the Department of Health, and it's dated May 19th. So it's got a lot of links down here. When you look at it online, these links are highlighted. You can hyperlink to an additional article from the CDC or from an executive order. But for the rest of the school year, we do wear masks indoors. We know it's been relaxed for outdoor activity, recess, phys ed class, things like that. But for indoor schools for the remainder of this year, we will be wearing masks. There have been a lot of talk about next year already, but we're going to try to finish this school year first, and then on June 17th, maybe the following week, we'll start planning for the fall in earnest. If you remember last year, from between May to September, the guidance we had probably changed, I don't know, eight, 10, 12 times. So it's possible whatever we have out there now may change multiple times before September. So we're not going to get too deep into planning for September 2021. We're just going to close out. Our focus now is on closing out the 2020-2021 school year. And we're actually shortened it up this year. A few board meetings ago, we shortened our calendar. So we'll be getting out the middle of June this year, which we think the extra time will benefit our students and our families and our staff. And next up, congratulations to our West Milford, 2021 West Milford High School valedictorian and salutatorian. Our salutatorian is Axel Malatek. And our valedictorian is Brianna Hazen. So congratulations to both of them. You will be hearing more from them at our high school graduation on June 15th. Wanted to give them a shout-out here. And lastly, since our next meeting isn't until after school dismisses, I want to thank our student rep this year, Ms. Amanda Gerald. I can speak on behalf of the board in saying you've been a wonderful part in this year. We've enjoyed having you at our meetings. It's been a school year like no other. And you will be missed, and you're welcome back any time here. So we do have a small plaque for you. I'd like to read it here. Presented to Amanda Gerald in appreciation for her service to the West Milford Board of Education as student representative for the year 2020-2021. And Ms. Gerald, do you have a student report? Your final one of the year?
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm Amanda Gerald, student rep, and student council president. As the school year is approaching, it's senior graduation. So following this, that's the last year senior class, we're doing a drive-through graduation on June 15th at Warwick, and our casting gowns have been given out this week. So that's exciting. Senior prom is also only nine days away on June 3rd at the Valley Regency in Clifton. The tables have been made, and the bids are also being given out this week. And so seniors are looking forward to a fun night as a whole class. This year's play of Into the Woods just came to a close after the casting crew have worked nonstop for past weeks, which was a huge time crunch compared to the time they usually have from December to March to prepare. However, they were able to pull off an outstanding show. The music was written by Stephen Sanheim.
Sanheim.
Who is a well-known composer supplying the cast with challenging music that they tackle with grace. Overall, the casting crew are extremely satisfied and proud with how everything came out. I also want to say congratulations to those who are recently inducted into the Foreign Language Honor Societies. A big shout-out also goes to all of those who participated in the District Arts Festival. Spring sports are coming to an end in a time that they're working hard and embracing the time that they've got to play together since their spring seasons were lost last year. Boys volleyball team is currently 17-1. They won their conference yesterday and are playing on Saturday in the county championship. They're then moving on to play in the state, which they are currently ranked fifth. So congrats to the boys volleyball. The boys lacrosse team has been having a successful year as well with a 13-2 record and plan on coming out strong in their upcoming state games. And as well, the girls team is currently 7-6 and also preparing for their states. Girls track and field have been very successful in hitting a lot of PRs and recent needs. They're excited for their county championship this Saturday, so good luck to them. And the boys team is working hard as well and excited for states and counties as well. The softball team has a record of 6-11. But an extremely young team, there's a lot of good to come in the future as the team grows. Baseball has a winning record at the moment of 7-11 and hope to continue that as they finish their last few games. In golf, the boys team went 6-15, and the girls placed second in counties and have had a really fun time together this year. As the spring sports come to an end, we want to thank everyone who was able to allow sports to be held this year despite the challenges that came with it. In addition, student council has been working tirelessly on senior choice and was just recently notified of the good news that it's allowed to be hosted as an in-person event. This event for the seniors is planned for Friday, June 11th at 7:30, where award dinners or where award winners will be announced. In addition to that, we have selected a new executive council. So I'd like to say congratulations to Abigail Weiss, who was going to be here, then her bowl across game got rescheduled to a later time, so she unfortunately could not come. But who is going to be named as next year's student council president and student representative. And I know she'll do a great job. The plans for spectacular have also already begun, and they're excited to be able to pull off this event once again. Thank you again for allowing me to speak through the year. It's been a great experience and an honor to represent the West Milford High School student body. I think everyone is anxious and excited to wrap this year up and start fresh. Any questions?
Thank you, Amanda. It's been a pleasure having you.
Amanda, do you know how many bids were sold for the prom?
I don't.
Okay. I was just wondering.
I hope everybody knows. I think it's good numbers.
Well, we've loved having you here, and we wish you well in your future.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Mr. Novak?
Thank you. Tonight, I'm just going to, I guess, explain to the full board and to, you know, everyone watching at home about some changes to our traditional summer programs. In the past, we've always run a summer literacy program that was for students in grades, current grades, kindergarten through three. Last year, we expanded the ages for that program, and we invited our, you know, K through, our current K through four students. This year, we were able to expand it. In the past, we've also only invited students who were, who attend the Title I schools in our district due to the funding that we use for this program. This year, similar to last year, we were able to invite all six elementary schools. We've also extended the day, and we gave an optional extended day for all participating students to get an extra additional hour of math and also to participate in a social, emotional learning, you know, fun recess type of process with some of our phys ed teachers. Last year, we set a record with participation with 103. And this year, we have 140 registered students for our summer program, and that is from July 6th through July 29th. Of that 140 who've registered for our summer literacy day, just about half of them chose to stay for the extended day. So we gave an option to stay. We didn't want people who've been traditionally part of our program to decline it this year because they liked the existing schedules. They, you know, wanted to get out at 11:30 like they had in the past. So we added it as an add-on, and we're just really, you know, really happy that, you know, we've got about 70, I think we're about 77 students who are going to stay for the full day. And 77 students is, you know, year over year, probably our typical numbers for what our whole program would have been. So I think parents know, and we've talked about it a lot all year, about the toll that the pandemic has taken, especially on our little ones. And I think many families have responded and have been eager to get some of that extra instruction that we're able to provide this summer. So we're really excited about that process. In addition to extending our summer literacy program to include math and social-emotional learning, we've created, for the first time, we've done a more of a summer camp-type style with our STEM camp. We offered it to all district students who are current kindergarten through fourth grade. Just because of our, and we're housing it at Camp Vicamus. So we're taking our staff, taking many of our science teachers. We've got middle school, high school, and elementary science teachers who are going to participate in the program, which is great. We've got, you know, 10 staff members, a nurse, our supervisor of science. We've got a couple of class aides. And we're going to run a camp at Camp Vicamus using our staff. Due to the logistics of the camp and the size of our staff and the area we can use for them, we had to cap it unfortunately at around 110 students. We do have a waiting list. So as we get notification from people who have registered that they can't participate, we're going to go to the list and add students from that if we can. It's going to be an exciting week. We've done a site visit to Camp Vicamus to start our planning process, and we've got numerous site visits going forward, including planning time and the ability for our staff members to go in and start, you know, getting their hands on the environment there and plan some great activities for our kids. So we're really excited about that. And we also have our extended school year program for our special education program. I don't know if Dr. McCray wants to say a few words?
Sure. Yeah, we will be running that program similar to in past years. We do plan to run it in person. Any parent that's still requesting virtual in the summer can just reach out to us, and we will obviously provide a modified type of the program. We do plan to still have our sites here at Westbrook School, at Maple Road School, at the high schools for both our magnet and our high school program, and Highlander Academy. So by now, if your child is eligible for extended school year through their IEP, parents should be aware of that, have already have had a conversation with their case manager, and then shortly they'll fill out some forms with. We do have some students with IEPs that are also attending the reading and the literacy program. I was happy to see that we did have some students with special needs also sign up for the camp, which I appreciate, Mr. Novak, you know, making sure that he's including and just really welcoming students with all different types of needs in all of the programs that he's also offered. So, thank you.
Thank you. And that's my update for summer programs. I just also wanted to share with the full board about a change that's taking place in regard to student teachers in the district. A number of years ago, the state passed a requirement for student teachers to record themselves in the classroom. And those recordings were used to, you know, for those student teachers to work with their supervisor from the university and, you know, go over the lesson and, you know, had a real educational purpose. Fortunately, at the time that they started that, there was concern about student privacy and those videos being videos of our students and the students, you know, around the state in their classrooms and, you know, with security and the types of concerns that people have. Number of districts, West Milford included, chose to not accept student teachers if there was a recording requirement. So we've stayed with that guideline, and we haven't been accepting. We've been requesting a letter from a university explicitly stating that they're not going to be requiring recordings for their student teachers. But the state recently updated that requirement, and universities now are providing us with, you know, a statement of assurance that the recordings that they are going to be taking are, you know, for the explicit use of the teaching candidate and the university supervisor. So they're not being stored, they're not being uploaded, they're not being shared. And they're, you know, pledging to the privacy of these recordings. So we check for that before we place our students. And, you know, so we are now, what we discussed at the Ed Committee, ready to accept student teachers and just making sure that we get those, like I said, statement of assurances from the university for how those videos are being used. We also foresee, once we, you know, put some of these student teachers in place, having a process to notify parents in the class that this is something that is part of the student teaching process so that if there is a recording that needs to take place for the student's observation, that a parent could have the choice to not have their student be part of that recording. So we are going to continue, we are going to begin accepting student teachers going forward who need to make a recording. And that's it.
Thank you.
This is Francisco? Yes. We have the board minutes from April 27, and we expect the closing minutes to April 27 for consideration.
I need a motion? Make a motion to approve the following Board of Education meeting minutes. April 27, 2021, regular budget, public budget hearing meeting. April 27, 2021, executive session.
Need a second? Karen? All those in favor?
Aye.
President's report.
I attended the Arts Festival, and I don't know if anybody else had, you know, had a chance, but it was just wonderful. I can't tell you how great it was to see everybody out there, to hear the music, and to know that they had very little time together. I don't think they practiced together-together. But the three bands, when they played together, it was just, it felt like normal. That's all I can say, is it just was wonderful and so enjoyable for all of our students. And I think it really was a good uplifting night for everyone. So I want to thank everybody who participated because it truly was a good community event. And I always look forward to it, and this year, they did not disappoint. I did attend the play this past weekend. I think they did a wonderful job. That's another thing where I have to say. It brings us another step closer to things being normal, and the show was fantastic, and the kids just, our students were just phenomenal. I always say that every year, but you sit there and you just cannot imagine that these young people are high school students because they put so much work, and they're so talented. And we have to be very thankful for what we have here in West Milford. We're starting the stages of our new strategic plan, which we had put off from prior to the pandemic it was supposed to start. It will be starting in September. There will be three meetings, September, October, and December 1st. Dr. Anamon will be sending out a honeywell to all the parents and stakeholders here in town if they want to participate in the strategic planning. There will be meetings set up and more information about what needs to come about. We're a little behind, but that's because of the pandemic. Other than that, I just want to say I'm glad that we're moving in the right direction, and I'm looking forward to graduation, and I'm looking forward to the school year coming to a close so that everybody can start afresh and get energized over the summer. Time for public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on this agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes. And then, time permitting, other public comment limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during this public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda, while speakers are asked to sign and register, sign the register provided, and to give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that the members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged, and the board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in the light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in those comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak on the agenda? Come forward. Your name?
Hi, my name is Justine Haley. And my children go to Paradise Knoll. Did you say you needed my address?
Yes.
49 Hilltop Road, Newfoundland.
You could sign that. Is there a pen there for you?
Yes, there is.
You could do that when you're done speaking if you'd like.
Okay. That'd be great. So I've never attended a board meeting before, but I'm excited to do that. I thought I was alone on some of my thoughts being here tonight, but I have a pretty strong group of parents and following behind me, and many that aren't here tonight and can't speak, so I'm speaking on behalf of them. This is in regards to guidance for the schools and the upcoming school year. I know that you said that would be discussed at a later date.
Is it for an item that's on the agenda? Because this part is for agenda items only.
No. This is in regards to guidance for the school year, the rest of the school year and September, and some concerns that parents have. I called, and they said I could speak openly tonight.
I mean, is the board okay with letting her speak prior? Because we sit through the hammer. Okay, go ahead.
It's a bipartisan conversation. So I understand that, obviously, you haven't gotten guidance for September yet, but some parents are concerned. So we are going to be coming to more of these meetings, and hopefully, we can all work together and with Dr. Anamon and Mr. Novak and the board. The first concern being Governor Murphy has already come out today and said that he is going to require masks for the children for September. And that's because they cannot be vaccinated. Many parents are concerned, and we can talk about it at a later date, that there'll be some segregation in school. And that's going to be an upset and a problem for many of the parents because they feel that if they don't choose to vaccinate their kids for COVID-19, they'll be in a mask. And how do you tell a child that they have to wear a mask as a scarlet letter to all the other children? So we want that to be addressed for the upcoming school year, whether amongst yourselves privately, with us. Another thing that is a concern, not really a concern, a favor to ask of the board or Mr. Anamon. We have several letters that were sent to us today from other Board of Ed members and across districts all over New Jersey and superintendents that have written letters on behalf of the parents and students that are concerned to Governor Murphy. We're asking kindly that maybe you can do that, too, and write him and show concern and support for our feelings on the masks for kids. We were told to follow the science, and we've done that. And we were told the kids were not the at-risk group. As you spoke of tonight, cases are going down. We're being told we can bring our children out in public as of Friday without masks to Target, to grocery shop, to family functions, and then we have to tell them to put them on for school. So we need to have a conversation about that. And we're wondering if you could please write a letter on behalf of us to Governor Murphy, like Tom's River, Randolph, Roxbury, and other superintendents that are doing that. Also, we want to make sure, too, that, I know Phil Murphy had put out some, the Roadback Guidance for schools. And we want to make sure, because I guess it was never really spoken clearly to other parents in the district. They were unaware about it, or they weren't honored with this. Children with IEPs, or Autism Spectrum, ASD, are not required to wear masks in school. Children with IEPs, or Autism Spectrum, ASD, are not required to wear masks in school, and also, if they have a medical exemption, that would inhibit their health. So I'm asking if you guys are going to honor medical exemptions and IEP exemptions for those children, because legally, in the guidance from the state, they should have been honored all year and going forward. And then my last point is... Sorry, I'm pulling it up. Thank you. So we have religious exemptions that are granted by the state of New Jersey for vaccination that the school board must adhere to and accept, and we need to make sure, too, going forward, that for the school year, they will still be accepted when it comes to the COVID-19 vaccine, and that there's no segregation with those either. So these are all questions and things that we need to discuss. We're concerned, there's a lot of parents, I mean, hundreds. I have group messages going all throughout the town with parents, and they've asked me to speak on behalf of them. So many of them are upset that they weren't aware, they had medical exemptions for their kids this whole year for masks, and IEP ones for sensory issues and other issues, and were told that their kids had to stay in a mask. So going forward, maybe we can work together on that?
Well, what I would say is, are you...
Yeah, now I am.
What I would say is, Dr. Anamon should probably reach out and maybe have a meeting with, I don't know that we can work it out in a five minute...
Yeah, of course.
...and since things are changing in the state.
They do change often, I understand that, and there's going to be a lot more of us coming to the meetings and keeping up with this, tracking this, and making sure that things are done fairly, because how do you tell one child, oh, he's not vaccinated, he has to wear a mask in school? That's going to be a moral problem, a legal problem, there's going to be hip investigations.
Maybe what you could do is reach out to Dr. Anamon's folks, or, you know, and we could get a meeting.
Yeah, we just want to bite it now before the school year ends and begins.
I think that would be the area where you could talk it out.
Good.
I do just want to clarify one thing, only because it's a recorded meeting, that we have had individual families and parents that have come forward with medical documentation or because of their child's disability.
I know, because I know I did, and it wasn't recognized.
Okay, because I'm not sure of the situation, but if anyone was ever, if anyone had to challenge that, that's something that they can come to my desk.
Okay, can I have your name, please?
Yeah, I'm Dr. Liz Elizabeth McQuade.
Okay, thank you.
And then Director of Special Services.
Thank you so much.
So just so that, as you're talking to parents, if there's any concern with that, I'd be happy to talk to those parents.
That's excellent. I mean, a lot of them were unaware, or they weren't even told that they had access to those exemptions, and that's where some of the frustration comes out.
I think Liz should be part of that meeting.
That would be excellent, yeah.
She, Dr. McQuade is in charge of...
Yeah, so any of the parents that have concern can be a part of the meeting. That would be excellent, a private meeting. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Maury Schaefer, it's S-H-A-F-E-R, and I live at 22 Broadway, West Milford. I also just kind of wanted to follow up on what Justine said. Sorry, I can't really, I'm inhaling and I can't really breathe. I do use a religious exemption for my daughter, and I would just encourage you to start thinking about what the fall will look like with that. I don't want my daughter to be in a mask indefinitely, and I think that that's something that we really, really need to think about, and really take parents' concerns very seriously, and please, start having meetings soon. Don't wait until September. This really needs to be hashed out going forward, and please don't put it on the backburner. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alexandra Swandler from 112 Timber Lane in Newfoundland, New Jersey. I'll make this fast. I do not have kids in the school any longer, but I have two daughters in college, and I am also a second-degree college student, and we all use religious exemptions. So I want to echo Ms. Maury McQuade and encourage you to please do something about this as quickly as possible, because it's very serious and needs to be addressed absolutely as soon as possible, and I am just a concerned towns person, because I see how this is affecting my neighbors, and I'm extremely concerned about really the health of the children and what it is doing to them psychologically. Thank you.
Hi, Tricia Gerst, G-E-R-S-T, 17 Hillview Court. I want to start by just saying I have three children in the school system, one in the high school and two in the middle school. All three of my children took the virtual path this year, and I just want to commend the board and all the teachers for what they did with the virtual students and the hybrid, and it was crazy, and I think everybody really stepped up and did the best they could to make this year as good for these kids as they could. But now, coming September, I'm going to take it a step further. The children need to be unmasked. No more masks for these kids. These kids have been put through the gamut. They are expected to sit in a classroom for, you know, six and a half hours with a mask on their face. That's the reason why my kids are virtual, because I refuse to send them to school to sit with a mask on their face. It is not natural, it is not normal, it is unhealthy, and it is psychologically damaging. They need to go back in September, no mask on their faces, if they want to, want to make it optional, that's fine, but the mandatory masking has to be dealt with. And also, there's been no documentation of any teachers having any fatalities from getting a sickness from a child in the school system in the entire state. Like, they're going to be out and about, they're going to be in stores, they're going to be going all over the place without masks on now, so there's no reason why they should have them in school anymore. Okay, thank you for your time.
I just want to comment, as a citizen, not a board member, but you might want to write to Governor. I think that a petition to him would be a wonderful thing.
And that's why we're asking you guys to do the same for us.
But I'm saying again...
There's many superintendents doing it on behalf of their districts for these parents.
Voters matter, to the governor.
We're doing it, too.
And there's no virtual option anymore, so they're putting us into a corner, and it's not going to be acceptable.
We will reach out. Thank you. Anyone else? Any votes? Okay, I'm going to need a motion.
I'm going to make a couple amendments to the agenda. Before I do so, I would like to just make one comment on the last thing that was said. We've been blessed in this community with our staff is relatively healthy. You know, people did get ill. I had a friend who passed away, an educator, on April 2nd, 2020. So there are people in this business who have passed away from COVID. These aren't just numbers, these are people with families, with wives and with children. So we know that that's happened. I know that's happened.
Who was that with children? Dr. Anamon, sorry, couldn't hear you.
With wives and children.
So the last speaker just said that, you know, no staff member has passed away, and that's true in this community. We've been very fortunate. But I have a friend who passed away on April 2nd, 2020, and a father, a husband.
I'm sorry, I said that no staff member had passed away from transmitting a virus from a child. Yeah, I got it.
No, some quick typographical errors on the agenda I'd like to make corrections to. Page 12, Personnel, Student Affairs, number 24. Amy Visi, Assistant Principal's Office, the daily rate is changed. It should be 265.13.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yes, top of page 12, Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution Number 24. Amy Visi, daily rate 265.13. Next page, page 13, Personnel, Student Affairs, number 26. We're going to change the payment to Daniel Brophy. The new number should be 1507, 1,507. And then underneath that name, we're going to add another name, Nicole Gwinnett, and that amount is 1860. On page 16, Personnel, Student Affairs, Resolution Number 37. About halfway down the page, we're going to delete one of the names, Nicole Gwinnett. You can strike that name out. She's been moved to a different summer program. Sorry for all the editing. And Operations and Finance, page 29, Resolution Number 44, is going to be pulled and replaced with a hand carry on the green sheet.
Can you repeat that, please?
Yes, page 29, Operations and Finance, Resolution Number 44, is going to be pulled. It is replaced by Operations and Finance 44 on the green insert.
Do you have hand carries here? Do you see them? Do you also have a hand carry that says you know?
Correct.
I said I'll make a motion to adopt the amendment if he's done.
I'm finished, yes, thank you.
Miss Parson here.
No problem. Romeo, let's make a motion to adopt the amendment.
Second.
Hold those in favor? Any votes? Okay, Education, Mrs. Flyer.
Yeah, I'd like to move items 1 through 5 for approval, and number 6 will be voted on after executive session.
Second. What was the question?
I have something.
Go ahead, Kate.
I'm excited about number one. I'm starting to get, I guess, by this linky thing, and I just wanted to say that I've been very skeptical, and this might be my first positive, but I really want to see more data. So I hope in the upcoming year that we get to see a lot of data and that we become a data-driven curriculum and environment. So I just wanted to mention that. I'm also, you know, I was pleased in the Education Committee meeting and the discussion. I just wanted to say that there's a psychiatrist on the list on number four who's retiring as of next week. So is that something that you would look to find someone else, as I know that Dr. LeDove will no longer be doing educational reports?
So he, two things. One, we're always open to adding new psychiatrists to our vendor list, which I, you know, told our teens counselors, so we review that as it comes in. Two, we're fortunate, where Dr. LeDove, although he's retiring, personally called me and said he would be willing to continue to work with my school.
You got the lucky star.
So that's why he is on there. He just asked that...
That's good to know.
Yeah, he just asked that we not contact him in the summer, he's going to take some time off, but then, starting, I think he said October forward, he'd be available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Can I just comment on the cost of that linked program? A little over a third of that is offset by our Title II rate. So that is not a, that is not that size of amount for our local budget, that probably about 34, 35% of it is going for the Title II. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Flyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Oshinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Oren.
Personnel, Student Affairs, Mrs. Stevenson? I'd like to make a motion to move items 1 through 41, I believe it was.
Notice 43.
Thank you. I knew I wrote that number wrong. 43, thank you.
You're welcome, second.
Discussion?
I'd like to just, I didn't read them here, okay. I'd like to just say thank you to all the teachers, numbers 1 through 4, who are putting in their resignations. I don't know many of them, but I do know Lisa Lyons. She was incredible this year, and I'm glad to see her go, but hopeful that she enjoys her retirement. I'd like that you do that.
Anyone else? I'm glad to see that we're hiring back our, one of our teachers that we had through left.
And I do have a couple more things, I'm sorry. I'm curious, in number 30, the summer curriculum development, I believe we talked about this again, but I was just curious, is this for science or social studies? Oh, social studies, not science. What subject is this for?
For our, reason, number 30 in general?
Yes.
Number 30 refers to, you should have, there's a handout, there's an insert that has a breakdown of anything that's, everything that's included.
Is it on the board page, or is it in the...
I can't access that board page. I tried.
I'm just asking.
Because it said electronically, and I went on to try to navigate, and then I almost threw my computer across the window. So I didn't, I'm not sure...
I agree.
I'm not sure where it is.
We're going to have, most likely going to have additional approvals for summer curriculum that the June, so what I can do is, I can go through in detail at the June Education Committee, and then you'll be able to see.
Okay.
Are they on the other page?
Yeah.
Barbara, I have a copy. I have a copy if you want to have a look at it.
Okay, I'll get it on you.
There's quite a few projects to work with.
So if we're having a problem with the board member's page, we'll definitely look into that a little bit.
That'd be great.
In the interim, we could email you the copy just directly.
And then, did we approve, or maybe I missed it, what teachers are going to be part of the curriculum development?
They would also be on that...
The next one?
Yeah.
Okay, and then is there any way that we as a board could see the revisions to the curriculum before adopting it, when we have copies of the curriculum?
Yeah, so we haven't had a whole lot, I mean, it's been, as we all know, it's been a different year, but that's a process we put in place, not this term, this year, last year, that prior to Ed Committee, you know, if we're, Ed Committee's on a Tuesday, the preceding Friday, you'll have access to it on the board page. So we have two, there's two tabs on the board page, one for curriculum that has been revised, and the other one is new curriculum that is up for approval.
Oh, great.
And I can just always shoot you an email with it also.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to make a question? Mrs. Francisco, roll call.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Oshinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
I abstained on 24 and 43. Yes to everything else.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Flyer?
I abstained on 21, 24, and 43. Yes on everything else.
21, 24, and 43?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstained on 24, and yes on the rest.
Okay. Operations and Finance, Mr. Oshinsky?
Okay, I'll look into 44, second. Okay, I'll make a motion to move items from 1 through 43.
Second.
Ms. Davidson?
Eight. I have a question on 22, the security. Is that the current program that we have right now?
Number 16?
Number 22.
Yes.
And do we know what breeds that that identifies?
It's disquieted.
Any other discussion, so items 1 through 43, 40?
I'm breaking out number eight. Can you still look in on what that's about?
Qualify purchasing, maybe? Okay, so if you're a QPA, which I am, you have a hiring threshold where you can, you don't need to watch BID, but not every school business administrator has that. You have to be certified by... You have to be certified by Department of Community Affairs. So it just gives you more flexibility?
That makes perfect sense, thank you. I just, it was long and it seems important, so I just wanted to ask about it.
Welcome.
Thank you. And then my last question for Operations and Finance is numbers 42 and 43, do I read this as Kinawan and Butoh Taktik are bringing their buses to us, for us to fit and work on? Is there a process that we're moving on that?
We've been doing this for years. So, and we charge them for the mechanics. Mechanics do it not normally during the workday, only because they have plenty of buses to work on. But over time, it's an opportunity for them to make overtime.
I think that's wonderful. And I know we always highlight Liz when she gets more tuition for Highlander Academy, so I just wanted to thank you for getting a profit for our district. And then going with that, number 45?
We're not there yet.
Oh, sorry. I'll wait.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Any other questions for 1 through 43?
We did 1 through 43.
Yes. Okay, well, if not, roll call, Mrs. Francisco, for 1 through 43. Mr. Ochinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Flyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke? You could probably move 44 through 70.
I can move to move number 44.
Can you use phone number 40?
Yeah, but it's basically.
I'll leave it at 44. I need a second then?
Second.
So that's number 44, right? Any discussions on 44? If not, bar, roll call. Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Flyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Ochinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke? Motion to move through items 45 through 65. Any discussions?
40, number 45. Now around 45. I'm just curious, why do we contract out to Jordan? If we're selling all those buses, why can't we just use them?
First of all, we couldn't possibly, we've had this contract with Jordan for probably 12 to 15 years. We don't have the facility to move all of our students. It also does us a balance because we have an opportunity to work with another organization, and they've been very cooperative in the past. We don't have enough bus drivers to move our own students, so we have to use cooperatives and we have to use outside organizations.
So going with that, if we did hire more bus drivers, would we not lose this?
Well, the contract limits are bus drivers to 50. And we couldn't possibly handle all of the routes with only 50 drivers.
Got it.
It gives you a balanced power.
Okay. And then my last question is number 60 and 61, with the school lunches, are there not going to be free lunches in September? I think we talked about this a little bit before.
School lunches, did you say?
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, we haven't decided if we're going to have all the parts yet, but we have school lunches now.
No, I know, but right now they're free.
Yes, and then we'll be next year also.
Oh, because there were prices attached with it, so made it out with my cookies. No.
I can hear it.
There were prices on number 68 and 61.
Yes, if we do end up going into all the parts, then there's going to be some additional costs.
And is it still through Pomptonian? Through Pomptonian?
Pomtono, yes.
Thank you.
The free lunches are good till the end of December, is that correct? Is the contract?
Right now, they're through the next school year.
Oh, they are through the next school year.
See, aren't you glad I brought it up?
Yeah. I'm not getting them, but it's.
Right now, if they're through the next school year, initially it's going to be problematic because my parents have haven't replied, provided us with the applications which are important for other reasons. But we look for due diligence and try and get the applications submitted anyway. And hopefully we'll be able to expand our program if things open up in the fall.
Since you brought it up, I hope I can bring it up. It's very important, since we're on TV, I'll say it, that parents fill out the free and reduced lunch forms. I know it's a paper, it's a paper item that most people, you know, would rather not fill out or whatever. No one knows if you get that lunch for free, because everybody gets the same swipe card. But when it's counted for us, the title money that Dr., that Mr. Novak uses for a number of our program flow off of that count. So it is extremely important that if you qualify, that you identify that you do qualify, because our district, it would be very beneficial to our district, and most of all, beneficial to our students. I'm sorry for going.
No, I'm glad I brought it up, so you could say that, because that is super important.
Kate, you have another?
I didn't have questions until the discussion of the bus drivers. And I guess I just want to clarify two things. Number one, 50 drivers, does that mean that we could only hire 50 school bus drivers?
Right now, in their contract, it's 50 drivers, yes.
Okay. And you said something about having an opportunity with the Jordan Transportation gives us a balance of power. Can you explain that? Like, I just don't under, I don't understand what you mean. That we, like, I could ask, I could ask 10 different questions, but I think you probably could just give me two sentences and then explain it simply. I don't, I don't understand it.
Well, a lot of districts outsource their transportation. So by not having everything on one side or the other, not totally outsourcing or not totally having your own drivers, it gives you a balance of power.
Okay.
Keeps equilibrium.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? If not, roll call. Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Flyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Ochinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes. This is 44 through 65, right?
Correct.
Thank you, yes.
45 through 65.
45 through 65.
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke? Next, further?
I'd like to move together item number 66.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, roll call. Mr. Ochinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Flyer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstained.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I would like to move item number 67 through 70.
Second.
If not, roll call. Mr. Ochinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Flyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move the hand carry, the item number 71.
Discussion? Roll call. Mr. Ochinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Flyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Thank you. We need to go into executive session before we address the negotiation items. Should we go now, or should we go to the floor? We'll move on to reports. Parks and Rec, I don't have anybody here tonight. Safety? We did not have a meeting this month. The next meeting will not be until September for the new school year. Superintendent Ramble?
Yeah, I have plenty of report this month. There were several items that were discussed. The first one was student vaccination. And the question was, if a student for the vaccine is able to get an appointment during school hours, will the absence be excused? And the answer from our superintendent was that vaccine absences will be counted the same as regular doctor's appointment. They are not excused, but if students are in danger of losing credits for a class, the same consideration will be given as a doctor's appointment as long as that a doctor's note. As an aside, students that have been fully vaccinated, and it's two weeks after their vaccine, will not need to quarantine if identified as a close contact through tracing. The second area was 2021, 2022 first grade. There was a question about how many kindergartens, how many first graders who attended other kindergartens will be returning to West Milford. And Dr. Anamon and Mr. Novak are going to check into that. The fifth grade, end of the year, everyone seems to be finalizing their plans. Fifth grade change of classes will be occurring again in September. Fifth grade band in chorus, those programs will be back next year. And there was a question, and this always, I always support the parents on this one, because I have a problem with the real, you know, the way that kids get lunch. I just don't like the food, I guess. But there was a question about who decides the menu? And is there any way to offer options other than the free lunch to students that families are willing to pay for them? And the answer was Pomtonian decides the menu, and hopefully next year, there will be more options for the students again. Discuss was the quality of the food offered to the students, and that information can be relayed to Pomtonian for hopeful improvement. There was a question about encore, the update with the return to school, the school plan, and students being offered class five days a week. The virtual cohort was able to be adjusted. Three virtual teachers returned to the person classrooms and back to the encore program schedule. That was Maple Grove, PK, and Westbrook. Each building is now receiving about .7 staff. The schedule began on Monday after spring break on April 19. There was a question about plan for utilizing recoveive three-week funds. And the answer was that there are no set plans. However, the district will have until 2023 to utilize the funds received from the SR2 grant. More details will come as the plans are solidified. Some options may be adding additional for support in buildings, extending the summer reading program to include a math and one social emotional break. The district is hoping to have an update at the next meeting. NJSLA, is there any update since our last meeting? There will be no NJSLA administered this spring. There will be smaller assessments for ESL and special education. The next large-scale assessment will be to start strong in the fall, and then the full battery state assessments next spring. Okay, and I thanks Kelly Zinziano for sending me this, because my notes, I couldn't make any sense out of it. So that is my report.
And our next meeting is Thursday.
Thursday's our next meeting, yep.
Thank you, Mrs. Flyer. State County School Board, Mrs. O'Brien?
Yep. The final of the State County School Board Association meeting of the 2021 school year was last night on Zoom. We've had an elections, we have a new county president and two new county vice presidents. The State School Board Association is offering a virtual advocacy program on June 8th through 10th for members up around, around the table, my cohorts. The County School Board Association is beginning to work on a county strategic plan for 2022 through 2024. Questionnaires will be sent to all board members. So that's separate from what we're doing here in West Milford. Keisha Drakeford is our county superintendent. She came on the Zoom meeting last night, and she introduced herself to the people who were there. Chris Jones, the New Jersey School Board Association Legislative Advocate, spoke about the state's budget, and it's in its final stages right now. And then he discussed federal programs and plans which have an environmental element involved with the push to build carbon-neutral schools and fund electric school buses. The big question of this whole conversation is who gets what for what? And then the, on a smaller note, the governor had signed the Civic Education Program that we should be implementing. Was it, would it be this year or next year? That I did not know.
Say that again, Debbie.
The civic education? The governor just signed a bill for that?
Oh, that, that's not for this year, it's for the.
That's for the, for next year, okay. Kathy Helloa, our field service rep, again, said our superintendent's evaluations are due by July 1st, and that the federal government is asking school districts for an entry plan for the 2122 school year. And that's it. You're welcome.
I have a question, Jen. Who's our new president?
Oh, thank God I saved my notes. Charles Caraballo from Bloomingdale.
Oh, okay.
And then our vice presidents are Frank Casper from Clifton, and that's our second VP, and the first VP is Mary Ann Kapruski from Passaic.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
New Jersey School Board, just that we had a meeting with Kathy Helloa to set up the strategic plan, and I gave that as part of my president's report. Legislative?
I have my report.
Technology oversight, Mr. Sweeney is not here. Township and Education Joint Committee?
Driving morning at 9:00 a.m. And then we were in a conference room in the board office, right? And West Milford Municipal Alliance?
The West Milford Municipal Alliance had their May Zoom meeting on Monday, May 10th. Discuss were the two grants that were due later in the week. Programs for the school, for our schools for the 2122 school year. National Night Out, which will be taking place on August 3rd at 6:30 p.m., and there is no rain date, which will be taking place at Bubbling Springs. There was a mention last month in my report of giving scholarships through the alliance. Unfortunately, the funding guidelines does not allow the awarding of scholarships. There was a discussion of having additional fundraising for scholarships for the graduates of 2022. Hope One Van is going to be at the Highlands Market, June 7th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This is a van that is staffed with a licensed medical, mental health professional, and, excuse me, and certified peer recovery specialists who understand the needs of those suffering with addiction. They help people access services and Narcan training. And the Hope Van is through the, is through PIC, prevention is key. And last, this past Sunday, Sunday, Sunday was our third annual SCOT run, and turnout was fantastic with about 155 people and a lot of support from our community and from our county.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very well attended.
All business? Any other need for all business?
Kate? I have something, I don't know if you want to include it in old business or new, but I think it's old business. The fifth grade, real program with the police department, is there any called the real? What?
Lead.
It was supposed to be lead.
Lead, thank you. Does anyone have an update on that? Was it discussed at Municipal Alliance, or have you spoken to them? I imagine this year it's not happening.
Good, the last conversation we had was that it wasn't going to be taking place this year.
Okay. And?
I don't know if I can address something. I did have a conversation with Mayor Dale congratulating all the new police.
I did have a conversation with Mayor Dale congratulating all the new police officers that they were able to hire. They were all in the wings waiting because of COVID, they couldn't go to academies. So that's why there was like a major, you know, they hired 17, I think it was seven new officers. And that is something that we were going to talk about, like some of the programs with the police and the schools because we, because of the COVID, because of the pandemic. And that, and the police department was so shorthanded that we were, we were going to discuss it. That was one of the items on my list.
Okay, great. I'll see my other one for new business, because that one we've discussed already.
So I was just wondering about the field and any update on the field. At Howard Field, I noticed that there's some, there's been some movement, if you will, of some dirt and, and rocks and things, and I'm just curious about it.
I believe that I put something in the operations and finance report. Mr. Kajaki, Recreation Director, and Chris Kelly, our supervisor of buildings and grounds, have been meeting regularly. They have a plan in place to do some renovation on the field at the end of the season. So in July, some work was done on the T-ball field to make that a little bit more playable. And so that was taken care of a couple of weeks ago. What you need to recognize is that we don't use a lot of our fields other than sports. So recreation uses our fields. We have to work together with them in order to keep and maintain them. So I believe that there's going to be some ground rules once the fields have been renovated, and that coaches and leads themselves really need to adhere to a certain schedule or let recreation or, or, or the education take care of the, any kind of renovations, so, or, you know, the, the maintenance.
I have to say, I feel like the Little League program and the soccer and the football do a great job at taking care of the fields. I know my family is out cleaning off the fields and helping them as much as possible. And Howard Field, I mentioned before, is being used by our freshman softball girls. I saw them again just on Monday night using the field. So that is one of our fields that is in dire need of being renovated and updated. It's the girls' freshman team just using it regularly.
But we can't use, we can't do anything with it now until the season is over.
We, we did have, we do have clay. We did, we did order clay. It has arrived, and when the season ends, it'll be put on the field. And it takes, it's a little bit of a process to get it done.
I believe that the field has a rock thing coming up too. So it needs to be scraped, it needs to be, it needs to be excavated, and then it'll be restored.
I hope this is something else that's on your list with the mayor, too. Because I think that this is.
Well, we always talk about that. The fields are something that always seems, recreation comes up in our board.
Yeah, I think, and I think it's going to keep coming up because you have a lot of board members who have young families who are using the field regularly and who, you know, we want the best thing for, for our town. So I'd like to keep talking about this, and I might keep bringing it up.
I feel, I feel that the mayor council works with us on different issues, just coming through.
And the rec department, you know.
Well, I'm saying that, that unfortunately, before COVID, there wasn't a rec director either. He had just come on. Like, I think we had one, what did we have, one meeting and that was it. So, you know, we're kind of all in that same boat. But fields, fields in West, in general, fields in West Milford are always a topic of concern, I think. So, yeah, it's, it's probably a standing thing on our side.
Before we move off that topic, in the notes, it does say that there was discussion about moving the varsity baseball field again. Could you explain that? In the notes from operations and finance meeting, it says that there was discussion.
You know, we do have some property behind that since school was up in the hill. And at one time, it was scheduled to become a soccer field, and nothing has been, we didn't move forward with that. But we're looking into the feasibility of perhaps building a baseball field up there because one of the problems we have at the balance is that all water flows down and the balance is the lowest point.
You answered my question, thank you. I could not determine from the notes where we were talking, so thank you very much.
I'm sure not that everyone materializes, but we can give it our best shot.
Well, we'll just keep talking about it so you don't get more and more annoyed. Make it happen for us.
Or getting annoyed doesn't give us anything. If it did, we'd be, we'd be rich now.
Yeah, I just left Chris a note to remind him that we need to, to put our heads together to try to figure out how to put a feasibility study together in order to see whether or not we can do it and what the time frame will be.
Thank you, my friend.
We'll do it.
Any other old business? If not, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, I told the board this.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? New business?
I have something. I, this week I attended a grassroots meeting at the high school with, under the direction of Mr. Trenacosta. And the objective of this meeting was to promote branding for the district, to try to unify all schools under one brand, and also to promote our district, to get it out there that we are providing for our children and our students better than a lot of charter schools, girl field schools, State County Tech. Our, our SAT scores are higher than PCTI. We have $60,000 in scholarships being given this year, which is phenomenal considering we've been in a COVID environment. It's my hope that, that this, this grassroots movement gets off the ground and we include the academics and the, the sports together so that we show the community that we are here for their children, that they don't have to put a kid on a bus for two hours, that they can come right here. We even have, we have culinary arts, we have the industrial arts, we have the academics, we have the sports program. We need the support of the community, and that's what this grassroots is trying to do, to try to get it out there, to let people know what West Milford School District is about. I can tell you, I have faith in this because my children went through this district and my children are highly successful. And they couldn't have done it. I mean, when they went off to college, their first comment to me was, mom, we were the only kid, we were the only one in our A- class who could write a research paper. Okay? We were the only ones who understand the math thing. So there's, and my kids are average kids, they're not honors, they're just average kids. But, you know, this needs to be promoted, and I'm happy to see that Mr. Trenacosta is moving this forward. That's it.
That sounds awesome.
Yeah. Any other new business?
Um, I was wondering, I know you won't have the numbers for me tonight, but Dan, I think this is probably going to fall under you. I'm wondering if you could let me know how many Heroes and Cool Kids meetings there were this year? At the beginning of the year, we talked about all those things that were missed last year. And we talked about all these programs, like the lead program and the Heroes and Cool Kids, and then, and we may not for that, you know, as those students went into Mac Pen. And in the fall, they got their T-shirts and they had meetings and they did, well, then this current fifth grade hasn't had the lead program, and to my knowledge, has only had one Heroes and Cool Kids meeting. So I would like to discuss at a later date, I'm bringing it up as new business so we can talk about it later, how to do that again possibly. I think it's too late to do it now in, in having meetings and whatever, but I know that the current sixth grade had, you know, made up for the things that, you know, just wanted to mention. I don't think the Heroes and Cool Kids program did as many things as they were supposed to. I don't even think they did half, but I might be wrong, so I'm asking you for the numbers. How many do they have in a normal year?
I don't know the exact, oh, I can, 21. I know if we began, the beginning of the year obviously was, was, you know, it wasn't happening in person, but I believe we started again in February.
Okay, so there have been some in-person ones?
Yeah, I'll give you the number for, for in-person.
Awesome, thank you.
Anyone else anything for new business?
Is there a motion to close the business?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Public comment. This portion of the meeting is open to members of the public having a legitimate interest in the actions of the board for the purpose of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operations of the West Milford Public School District. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a time period of 30 minutes, and then time permitting, other public comments limited to five minutes per speaker will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided, give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by the members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. Well, comments will be considered, and a response will forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals and speakers, specifically comments regarding students and employees in the board are discovered, and the board and the administration will not be, will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights accorded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Anyone wishing to speak under public comments?
Tricia Gerst, G E R S T, 17 Hillview Court, excuse me. I just want to make a clarification for the board's edification and the public's edification. I don't want to be misquoted in the minutes or on record, on video. I think that my comment by Mr. Ofschinsky was misconstrued. I meant to say, I believe I did say, that there had been no documented fatalities in teacher-to-student transmission or student-to-teacher transmission. I didn't say there was no fatalities of any teacher in any school district, period, but there has been no documentation that there has been fatalities from transmission from a teacher to a student or a student to a teacher. I just want to make that clear, and I know that, I understand there's no back and forth, but I just want to make that clear for everybody's edification.
Oh, Chris, it's you and Dr. Anamon that was responding to it. If when we have our announcement and the mics are going, I don't think.
Oh, my God, but you sounded just like Mr. Ofschinsky. So thank you very much, that's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Maury Schaefer, S H A F E R, 22 Broadway, West Milford. I had heard, this has absolutely nothing to do with masks or anything else, but I was reading about Governor Murphy's new bill that he signed. I believe it's called the Teaching Tolerance Program. I might be saying the wrong thing, but a lot of it has to do with kind of the sexual orientation, transgender type of education. And I'm wondering if parents will get any kind of notification about what their children will be taught, and if parents will be able to opt out of any of that kind of education. I've heard that it will reach across all subject matter, so it will not just be limited to health class, but that things will be implemented into English, social studies, et cetera. What do we do as parents? I feel like this is kind of, you know, a whole new thing, and I feel like parents need to know so that we can then have discussions with our children about things that they may be taught. I'm wondering if there's any kind of a plan to alert parents to those kinds of curriculum changes. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, thank you. Alexandra Swandor from 112 Timber Lane, Newfoundland.
Just one quickly, if all of you could just sign that right after you're done to let me know.
Sure, okay. No, 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 of course. So I just wanted to thank you. It has been a difficult year, and so we do appreciate your efforts, and I'm sure that sometimes you feel they might go unrecognized by the town, so thank you very much. So regarding the masking issue, I do just want to kind of like end on one thing. You know, we do encourage the board to adopt and unmask the children approach and perspective moving forward. We feel it's extremely important for the children's psychology and health. I think that earlier when we were speaking, we were seeking a little bit of moving forward and so, but I don't know if we had that. I understand you can't necessarily address where we are right now. However, President Van Dyke, you did encourage us to, you know, advocate for ourselves, you know, to the government, the state government. We're a very, very politically active group of, of parents here, and who have, feel this issue is very important, so please don't underestimate our activity with the state government. And we ask that you support us and do the same. We are asking you, will you support this? And will you please be our advocate for this issue? And Dr. Anamon, correct? Thank you. I, I knew that when we ended, you had said, you answered that somebody had died of COVID that you knew, but that wasn't really answering our question. We're asking for your support and to join the superintendents of Roxbury, of Landau, Bayville, and other towns in drafting a letter to the governor, supporting the unmasking of students as soon as possible. You know, we understand that many people have had relatives, friends who have experienced COVID or who have died of COVID, but, you know, we've also had relatives who are dying of other things as well. And I felt that was a bit of a punt. You know, we want to work together, we would like to, you know, work with you to perhaps even draft the letter if this is something that you would allow us to do with you. And so we feel that we're working, you know, hand in hand on this, but this is a very important issue to many of us here and to many other parents in the town. So thank you so much for listening to me, and thank you again for all your hard work this year.
Thank you.
Seeing our son, I'd like to move to public comment.
Are you in second line?
Or second, sorry, whatever.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Do you need a motion to go into the second session?
Okay. At 8:20 ETN, I make a motion to go into second session for the purpose of discussing personnel appointments, resignations, current litigation matters, special education matters, associations, HIDs, and matters of attorney-client privilege.
Second. All those in favor? We will be coming out to take action.
Close the meeting back to order. Go ahead.
Mrs. Romeo?
Here.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Soaman?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Guido?
Mr. Ofschinsky?
Here.
Mr. Conklin?
Here.
Mr. Van Dyke?
Here. Mrs. Dwyer?
Okay, I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the following picks. 2021 H1, we are going to table that. 2021 M1 unsubstantiated, and 2021 H2 substantiated.
Any discussion? If not, local?
Mrs. Choyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yeah.
Mr. Ofschinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes. Need a motion to adjourn?
No.
No? Oh, negotiations, I'm sorry, I was ready to adjourn. Sorry about that, Deb, go ahead.
Sorry about that, Debbie. Go ahead.
All right, well, let's make a motion to approve the following Highlands doing with the whole thing.
If you tell me you're sending, you do not, because everyone knows what you're doing.
You can, if you would like.
Be it resolved that the West Milford Board of Education ratified the memorandum of agreement and shall advise the West Milford Education Association on behalf of the West Milford Education Association, the West Milford Educational Secretaries Association, and the West Milford Special Cross AIDS Association for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, and be it further resolved that the board president and board secretary are authorized to execute final contract documents once placed in a form satisfactory to the board labor, labor council.
Any discussion? If not, local?
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevenson?
Yeah.
Mr. Ochsinski?
Yeah.
Mr. Conklin?
Yes.
Mrs. Flyer?
Yes.
Mr. Guido, oh, sorry. Mrs. Romeo?
I abstain. Now I need a motion to adjourn. Anybody? All those in favor? Have a good night.